Yes, you're on.
All right. A meeting of the township of Precipity Troy Hills Planning Board. It's Monday, January 22nd, 2024, 7:30 PM. We have some members who have not yet been sworn in. And I'm going to say this part here before I go to that. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. I can have you call the roll.
Do you want to swear them in first and then we'll call the roll?
That's a good idea.
Okay. Dominic, Ted, and Jigger. Dominic, I'm going to swear you all in at once when I say.
If I could stand here, sir.
Yeah, you're fine.
Say, state your name.
And then alternate number, Dominic is alternate number two. Ted, you're alternate number one. It's your third title. Jigger, you're going to be class four. Okay? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Aye, Dominic.
Do solemnly swear. Now just read it. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ted Sanziel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Thou shall support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that thou bear true faith and allegiance.
And thou bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
Thou impartially.
I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office of.
All of the duties of the office of.
Planning board member.
Planning board member. Alternate.
Alternate number one.
Of the township of Precipity Troy Hills.
Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we can call the roll.
Yes, we can. Mr. Didich.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Councilman McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Sanziel.
Here.
Chairman Dingsmore.
Here.
We have our board planner. No, we don't have a board planner or engineer this evening. Excuse me.
We have a special planner tonight.
We do have a special planner here. Mr. Snikus and our board attorney, Mr. Laguna.
Very good. All right. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
That's me. Use your sign key.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My pen though.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something to bring before this board that's not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We can move on. Uh, we have no resolutions or agenda other than our other business, which is 1515 Route 10 redevelopment plan amendment request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nicole Magdziejak, M-A-G-D-Z-I-A-K, of the law firm Day Pitney. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is the current developer of the property located at 1515 Route 10, which is block 200, lots 1.04 through 1.07. As some members of this board may recall, this particular property is subject to a redevelopment plan that was adopted initially just before the pandemic and then amended during 2020. So construction is currently underway. If you drive by the site, you'll see that many of the buildings are already up and cruising along hopefully as quickly as possible through the winter in order to finish the development. So right now, the developer is working on leasing for the tenant spaces. So as some of the board members may recall, and for the benefit of the new members, the ground floor portion of two of the buildings is intended to have a combination of restaurants and retail and just different uses in order to create this district and a vibrant town center type community in this area. So what we've realized in going through the redevelopment plan and just the interest in tenants that we're receiving is that not all of the uses that are approaching us and that we're able to engage with in order to potentially have tenants are accounted for in the redevelopment plan. Additionally, some of the tenants that we are very close to having leases with are asking questions about things like permanent outdoor dining because it's really important for the two anchor restaurant tenants. So two of the spaces are intended to be full service restaurants. So you go in, you sit down, somebody, you know, wait staff comes over and you order your meal and maybe you hang out for a little bit. So those, those two, what we're calling our anchor restaurants are really pushing to have the permanent outdoor dining space. So the way that the redevelopment plan is written currently, it doesn't really contemplate having a permanent structure, like a roof type structure, even though it's open on all of its sides to cover that dining area or something that's permanent every year. So the ordinance that exists today on the books in Precipity, separate from the redevelopment plan, allows for an annual renewal of essentially a license to have outdoor dining. And I think probably a large genesis of that was the pandemic because a lot of restaurants wanted to have outdoor dining. So we are able to comply with a lot of those requirements, but are seeking an amendment to the redevelopment plan to allow not only our structure to be permanent, in fact, we'd actually like for it to be connected to the building. So it's not going to just be a pop-up tent. It would be a very architecturally detailed and designed structure that would be there year round. The table and chairs obviously wouldn't be out year round because on days like today, when it's 15 degrees, most people are not dining outside. But at least that structure would be allowed to be permanent. And also building into that redevelopment plan, the ability to keep that outdoor dining every year without having to go back to the town for an annual license. So there are other requirements that are looked at during that annual review that we would be able to comply with and that we think could be built into the redevelopment plan. But I think just the, for the tenants that are going to be there, the process of going back every year and asking for approval for the same thing that's going to be out there is something that we're hoping could be modified as part of this redevelopment plan. The uses that I had noted that are not necessarily contemplated, one in particular is an ability to have a combination use. So we have been approached by a restaurant slash retail tenant. So they do have a restaurant that they operate, but there's also a retail component to it. So you could go in and just go to the retail side and purchase something as if it's a store, but you could also go in and just dine or you could do both. So the ordinance allows for each of those, or the redevelopment plan allows for each of those uses separately, but not necessarily combined in one tenant space. So it's not really a new concept of a use in terms of the underlying uses themselves. It's just putting them in one tenant space. That's not actually accounted for specifically. So in order to avoid a use variance, we would ask that that be added. The other use that is increasingly popular is a medical spa use or a med spa. It's actually not really contemplated in many municipal ordinances currently. It's more of an up and coming hybrid use. That's a combination of a medical use and a spa use. So those kinds of places do things like botox and you could also go there to get a massage or you could go there to get a manicure. So it's more than just your nail salon. It's more than just a spa, but it's not a full blown medical office. So it is a hybrid type use that really just wasn't contemplated at the time of the underlying ordinance or the redevelopment plan. So that's another use that is seemingly very popular and has a lot of interest in this particular area and not even just this municipality, but the county as a whole. We're seeing it pop up a lot more. So we would like to add that as a use also. And then obviously, which is very important with the uses and it was at the time that the redevelopment plan was adopted, is parking. So we have uses in the redevelopment plan that are permitted principal uses, and then we have uses that are conditional uses. And the condition that's currently attached to those uses is, or relates to parking. So we have to prove that we either have sufficient parking based on just a straightforward, this is our use, this is the demand that's, or what's required in the redevelopment plan and we have it, or a shared parking concept, which is built into our redevelopment plan. That's the only condition on certain uses and currently restaurants are included in that category. So we would like to amend the redevelopment plan so that restaurants are not considered a conditional use. And the reason we think that it's appropriate as a principal use is it still has to go through the zoning process. So it still has to get a zoning permit prior to a tenant moving in. And at that time, typically parking is evaluated. We would supply the proof that there is sufficient parking. And also with the new state statute related to electric vehicle charging stations, which we do intend to install on this property, we can actually adjust the way in which parking is calculated because there is a bonus if you provide electric vehicle charging stations. So at the time of the redevelopment plan, that state statute didn't exist and the ordinance in your town that codified that statute also didn't exist. So none of that was really contemplated at that time. And we do think that the parking works, even if it's calculated in a way that counts the electric vehicle spaces differently. And as you may know, just from other applications that have come before the board in the last year and a half or so since that was enacted, you can count up to a certain percentage more than once if you have the EV spaces. And the developer is proposing to install those EV spaces onsite anyway, because it's something that they'll certainly need. There's going to be a demand to have electric vehicle charging. And at the time that this was approved, it just wasn't contemplated. So we'd like to allow that as an accessory use, even though I think by the state statute, it should be allowed anyway because currently they could go pull a zoning permit and put one in. But just to make it abundantly clear that they can have electrical vehicle charging stations and that the development and project is subject to that statute. And then the last item relates to signage. So we're finding with the tenants that we're talking to that it's really important for them to have visibility from Route 10. It's really one of the benefits to having this project is that so many people drive by on Route 10. And right now, the way the redevelopment plan is drafted, all of the units that face or that are in building C, which is the one that is going to front on Route 10, aren't necessarily allowed to have signage on that backside. So unless you happen to see the signage on the corner or know what's in there because you're on Google Maps or something like that, you're not just going to have that drive-by visibility. So we have seen a lot more increasingly requests for that signage. So in lieu of coming in on each individual tenant for a variance application for signage, we're seeking to amend the redevelopment plan to account for that as well. That's really the highlights from a high view of what we're proposing. I do have Max Dorn here with me this evening, who's a representative of the developer. We do have some renderings that our architects put together. If that's of interest for the board to just see kind of what this concept looks like in terms of the permanent dining and some of the signage that we're proposing.
Chairman, if I could also.
I would love to find out what it is we need to do.
Certainly, certainly. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Ed Snikus with the Firm of Burgess Associates, professional planners. We were involved in the original redevelopment plan for the property and we helped to write the ordinance, go through the approval process, things of that nature. And I wanted to let everybody know that we've been asked to opine on these proposals from that standpoint. And I wanted to make sure this board had the ability to hear about it first before we offered any comments regarding it, because we wanted to see what we would be authorized, essentially, to work on. We didn't want to go out ahead of anything before it comes to this board. So essentially, what I've asked them to do is to come tonight, set up this meeting so that they can at least introduce what they were looking for. The board can give their initial reactions and/or await for us to come back to you with recommendations from these initial requests. So what I would offer to the board is that it's really sort of open for discussion at this point. I do have some initial questions that I'd like to ask of the applicant relative to this. And maybe they have some answers now or we can discuss it and then get back to the board with regard to those issues, should you decide to move forward with any adjustments to the regulations. Essentially, do you anticipate a site plan application for these accessory structures? Or what I call accessory structures, maybe they're not because they're attached to the principal structure for the outdoor dining?
For the outdoor dining, yes. We do anticipate the need, whether it's an amended site plan, because technically our site, I mean, we're in construction, but we're not done with construction yet. So however it's.
It'd be amended.
However, it's classified, likely an amended. But yes, we do anticipate, particularly because they're attached to the building, that we would be coming back to this board, you know, the standard process of submitting application, notice, coming back to the board for a public hearing and presenting the formal designs for those two spaces.
Okay, that's important. I just wanted to offer that to the board, that you will have an opportunity to see what those are. So you get a sense to understand.
If I can chime in on that, I think that's an important point because the one thing that maybe an annual permit doesn't give is a resolution based on a site plan application that then runs with the property. When if you do it via site plan, then the board would have opined on all of the kind of nuances of the outdoor dining when I think it's either or. You know, if it's either you do it on an annual licensing basis or you do it via site plan applications. I agree with Ed on that one. That's an important aspect of that.
And sometimes the annual licensing, I'll just jump into this from, at this standpoint, helps a municipality to deal with, let's say, violations and/or any sort of nuisance things that may come up in outdoor dining. But yet, due to the health department regulations, likely this is going to be a highly, what do I say, regulated from the standpoint of a landlord overlooking the property, you know, and watching what the individual restaurants are doing, if there are complaints, things of that nature. The other aspect to the outdoor dining that they're asking to be included is outdoor music, right, loudspeakers, things of that nature. So we may want to, what I was thinking of, some of the things to offer to the board is crafting in a timeframe relative to that, when it might be permitted, because you do have residences that are living at the facility. So obviously those are important as well. So it's those sort of things that I was wondering about in the outdoor dining. That combined retail restaurant type of activity, do you anticipate that to be a specific ratio that would be defined through a zoning permit as far as how much is dedicated to retail? Trying to define how we arrive at a parking requirement for that.
So I think in terms of the parking requirement, we're thinking of it as, I know it's one tenant space, but as breaking it up based on the use, so that the parking would still be calculated based on the use, even though.
The square footage.
The square footage, well, the square footage for the retail component. And then I think our restaurants are by seats.
Seats or square footage.
Or square footage, whichever is greater. Right, yes. So we anticipate it being calculated in that way, which I think would be a conservative approach for a, because in theory, you could go to the restaurant and then walk over to retail and you're still just one.
Right.
Group of people.
One trip.
But at least if we're treating it in that way for parking purposes, we, it should be conservative.
Okay, thank you. The med spa use, you also indicated medical office was another potential user. Is that something you're still looking for?
Yes. So it initially came to us through a med spa, which again, isn't really, doesn't fall quite into a personal service category. It's not quite a medical office. So that's sort of a hybrid use. And with that, though, we don't have any leases currently. There has been some interest from like a dental office or those types of uses, which would fall into the medical category.
The only issue I have with that, and again, I don't want to get into too much of the weeds here, but the concern for the shared parking. Obviously, the board is reviewing that with their professionals to try to not overburden the zoning department relative to making sure they can understand the shared parking agreement or plan in order to make sure that's still going to work when you do have these more intensive uses, whether it's a dental facility or a medical office. That would be the only other concern that I would voice for consideration that we discussed, let's say. And whether or not it's a cap or a square footage or something to that effect, so that it doesn't upset the ultimate apple cart. I guess when you come back in for an amended plan, maybe that can be defined in some way. Because I know you touched on the restaurant aspect of it from an amended site plan standpoint, and you'd be adjusting certain things relative to that. But this way, the board and their professionals can review that and doesn't overburden the zoning office for that sort of interpretation or discussion.
Just a question, because I've invested in companies like Huttera and companies like that that do cool sculpting and botox and a number of other things. And it's actually a fairly low density user of space.
Right.
So, and you also have apartments there where you would anticipate that a significant portion of the customers would already live there, so they could just walk down.
Be the residents, exactly.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, the only concern I had was a medical office. That may draw from a larger population, let's say, something to that effect. And I didn't think the med spa was so impactful, let's say, from a parking standpoint. I thought the medical office might be. That's just my concern.
You're talking about a doctor's office, dentist's office, or a concentra type place?
Aren't dentist's office and medical offices done by chairs too?
It's, yeah. Well, actually, square footage. We have a higher square footage ratio relative to that than in comparison retail.
So if it's treated as a medical, that's ultra conservative.
Correct.
If you're doing, if taking the square footage of a medical facility and using that number, you're then ultra conservative in your parking.
Yeah, it tends to require more parking in its peak period. But obviously, the peak periods could be at different times too. So that's where the shared parking discussion becomes that scientific analysis almost as to when those spaces may be in high demand in relationship to the residential units that are there, where some people may be away at work compared to when the medical office is needing people to come and go. I just know that that, we, in the redevelopment plan, have a standardized one per 250 square foot requirement for retail. So I didn't want that retail number to overburden the parking, I'm sorry, the office, medical office, to overburden the parking ratio as you would look at it. So that was just one thing I'm just putting out there for us to maybe discuss in more detail. And so the board's aware of some of those conversations. In addition to that, the other question I had was, under the Principal Permitted Use criteria, the reason why we originally made it a conditional use was to allow the board the ability to review any future changes to restaurant use. And maybe we can arrive at that same place in some way because of the restaurant being a more intensive use than straight retail, things of that nature. So if a restaurant was to grow into a retail space, maybe it required an amended plan of some type. I'm trying to keep the purview back to the board because of the difficulty of the shared parking discussion. So if that ratio was to change in some way, it requires it to come back to the board. So that the professionals get a chance to review it, not just, and to give the board as far as their opinion as far as how it's working.
I, the first thing I thought of is a seafood market restaurant.
Right.
So you have, you know, a market where people can come to the front shop and turn around, and then you also have a restaurant. So you have a retail in the front, restaurant in the back, kind of two independent uses, but two highly trafficked uses. So I agree with you that you would want some review as those turn over. Because you never know, it might be a T-shirt shop and a restaurant. It might be some apparel, but I think like a seafood shop or a restaurant and a, you know, butcher shop or something like that, where you're going to draw in two different types of crowds. You might want that oversight when you get into those kinds of uses.
I was going to say, have you ever been to Frankie Spontino in Brooklyn?
Or like a Cracker Barrel?
Well, yeah, but Frankie Spontino has.
Oh, looks like I hit the, I hit it on the head right there.
It's not a Cracker Barrel, but it is like in that concept, right? Where you can walk in.
That's a better choice. But Frankie.
It's not that, but.
They also have a retail olive oil business and a takeout pizza business. Michael?
At least half of this board was not here in 2018.
Yes.
Even though what the entire 1515 is involved. Wouldn't it be appropriate at this point to have Max come up and, and, do you have any, any drawings here?
Yes, we do have.
Do an overview of 1515, so the new board members can see what it is we're going to have at 1515. That's number one. Number two, I'd like to know what the status is of the roundabout and when that's going to be completed. And then also where we stand with the apartments, because we, we agreed to let 1515 build the apartments first, which was a reversal of what was originally planned. Where do we stand on that? So I'd like some background for everybody here before we get into the nitty gritty that Ed was talking about.
Sure, yes. Max, maybe we can talk about sort of construction and timing first and then we can jump to the renderings that we have.
I'm going to swear you in as a, do you swear from the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, professional address for the record.
Sure. Maximilian Dorn, D-O-R-N-E. Address is 32 Mount Kimball Avenue, Marstown, New Jersey. Good evening. Thanks for having us. Appreciate all your guys' time. Mike, great to see you again. In terms of the DOT roundabout, the entire force main has been installed. They're going through the testing now, dry testing and then wet testing. The roundabout itself is also being completed in terms of construction work, retaining walls, they're going through final inspections. That will not be turned over until DOT, until building A is completed. And we have South District Drive completed. So we don't want cars coming into the roundabout entering South District Drive.
Estimated date?
For building A turnover will be December of 2024.
Okay.
Building A, which is 262 units, it's the building to the east. It's fully enclosed, fully watered tight. We're going through the exterior sheeting now and finishes, so that building.
Just so some of the people know what the roundabout is that I'm talking about. Okay? If you wanted to get into 1515 property today, when you get off of 287, you would have to travel west on Route 10, go up to the 202, make a double loop around, and travel south on 10, and then turn into the property. You would have to do that whether you're going to Delta Dental or the Octagon Building or 1515. You have to make that double loop and impact on the traffic on 202 and 10, which is always busy now. When 1515 was before us, we wanted the roundabout because what people will do now is, when they get off of 287, you get onto Route 10 westbound, they will make the Jerkham Turn on Dryden Way, go underneath Route 10, and then before they enter the property, there's a roundabout, okay? You go into the back road, you go around a roundabout and go into the back road and enter 1515 or Delta Dental or the Octagon Building from the back. You won't have to impact on the intersection of 202 and 10 at all. You're solving, we're solving a problem on 202 and 10 somewhat. Okay, so that's why I asked about the roundabout. That's necessary.
You're absolutely correct. That was a regional improvement to the area. But again, that work is done, but we will not be turning it over until building A is complete, South District Drive is complete. So that is publicly dedicated so that that area will.
And I got that rap for you, so we could, we could get the Frehelder approval.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And just for the benefit of the board members who weren't here, there are three buildings. We'll refer to them as A, B, and C. But Max, you just want to briefly, you described A, but.
Sure. So moving east to west, the first building is 262 apartments. It is a four-story building there, two interior courtyards. Moving to the southwest is building B. That includes the parking deck. It includes the portion of the 55 plus, 49 units. And then the remainder of the 498 units are also on floors three, four, and five. You have just under 30,000 square feet of in-line retail there. So all those buildings are encompassed in, you know, the same frame. North of that is building C. That's a standalone retail building, again, just under 30,000 square feet. If you drive by now, there's a stockpile of dirt there. But again, that's the approximation of where building C will be.
So A is the apartment building that's currently under construction. If you're driving by it, it looks like a lot of the exterior is done on it.
That's correct.
And the sort of concrete structure that we're seeing is the parking garage of B.
Parking structure is complete. Steel is about 40% complete, and we started wood framing on the southeast corner of building B last week.
You had some renditions of these on large boards. Whenever we meet next time, could you, could you bring those?
Absolutely.
So the board can have a visual of what we just discussed.
Sure. We do have renderings. I have handouts on 11 by 17 that we can share. These are focused primarily on buildings B and C, that sort of retail corridor. So you won't see all of the buildings in here, but I think it gives a good. Yeah, okay. I'll go to the back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have enough?
I was going to say, we have. Okay, we have an interested individual in the audience who may very well.
Frank, mighty safety, has he had one before?
Just a quick overview, if you guys would like. First page here to the left, this is a view from the first floor of the residential above the retail. To the right is Building C, which is the 27,000, 28,000 square foot standalone retail building. In the center there is what they call a woo nerf, it is a pedestrian area that allows vehicles to enter. This space will be very activated in terms of landscaping, hardscaping, it does have the ability to be shut down for public events, and that's something that will definitely be worked with Parks and Recreation Department on. The second page is a view from the, standing on the west side of the campus, the building in the background is Building A, the four-story building that is currently under construction and watertight. So this kind of gives you that ground floor feel, you know, looking out from Building B. Next page is a very similar view, give a better understanding of how Building A compares to that. So again, Building A is a four-story building, Building G is a five-story building, and Building C is a double-height retail standalone. The last page, this is a rendering looking, looking north at Building C. The two primary restaurants here, especially the proposed, you know, covered indoor/outdoor space, so these would be our primary restaurant locations. You do have a breezeway in between that separates north and south, we want just some additional parking, but we envision this being the main core, the main hub of the area.
I led you right into that, didn't I?
Can I ask a question about the signage? Is that going to be wall-mounted, building-mounted signage? That doesn't, you didn't really specify it.
Yes, building-mounted.
Okay, I think maybe the board's okay with that, that they should allow for a second building-mounted sign.
Yes, not, not another monument or anything, nothing on the ground.
Correct, I think that was, so yeah, I think I understood where you were going with that, but just to make it clear from the amendment, it's wall-mounted.
What about the heights of the signage there?
In terms of, so basically with the signage, what we've done was we've blocked it out based on certain massings, not knowing what the total, you know, meaning of the buildings would be, what tenants are going to come in, so all of those will require us to come back for additional approvals, am I correct? If they're amended.
So what we're hoping is that our tenants will come in and will say, here's what you're allowed, and they'll say, yes, our signs will fit in that. But what we're proposing here is to amend the number, so not the, I think we previously had heights and lengths and percentages that were permitted, and we're hoping to work within that height and within that length and percentage, but to be able to add, so for example, some of the restaurants have their name, and then, you know, a cursive initial that represents their, like, logo, but technically, that's a separate sign, even though it's a letter. So that was not contemplated at the time that we were developing the plans, like the concept plans for the redevelopment plan, so we're running into that now, where particularly the two larger restaurant users have a logo in addition to their name and.
So they would have two wall signs on one side of the building and two wall signs on the other, in theory.
So, Mr. Chairman.
And each one of those I'm going to count as a separate sign.
Correct, that's what we were assuming, that each would be a separate sign, which is why we would run into variance issues on, on all of those.
And again, I think part of the conversation is when we came into this plan and we wanted to work within the confines of what was allowed, so we created these boxout areas. Now, as we've gotten into lease negotiations, some of these tenants have specific branding requirements or requests, so trying to modify and accommodate them within the confines of zoning, that's really our intent with this.
Yeah, and if it were one user that was asking for it, obviously, we would apply to the board for that variance, but it's essentially across the board for all the restaurants that we've been talking to, that that's how they, they brand their restaurants.
And I think it's an appropriate request, being that you're on Route 10, the visibility, the traffic, and not wanting to look at a back-of-house or something that, you know, you're really trying to create a live-work-play type of environment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, so.
Mr. Stanziel?
I guess it's, it's kind of a broad question. The first one is, I guess, so is the goal tonight to approve these five items, is that the, is that? No, what I would offer to the board is, they're making this request, we would come back to the board with actually the recommendations after we discuss some of these other percentages of signs and of that nature, and come back to you with our recommendations in a written document. And you then would look at that written document, say yea or nay, or make some adjustments. We would then use those as recommendations to the governing body for an amendment to the redevelopment plan. So that would be your process, and then the governing body would institute that, those changes, send it back to this board as one of the cycles of the normal amendments, for you to review for consistency, essentially. And then from there, the governing body would have a public hearing for a final adoption of those changes. So I, I guess Mike, and, and Mike kind of touched on it a little bit, and I think we got the 100,000-foot, you know, 9,000 mile an hour blow-by on, you know, what the project is. I have no idea what 1515 is. You know, I, I know from Mr. Cahill's fine articles in The Patch and, and things that have been, you know, spoken about around town, but I don't even know what I'm voting on here. I mean, I don't have any problems with any of this stuff, but I, I don't even know what the project is. Certainly, what we're asking is for you to authorize us to prepare that, recommendations, and then, I think, as Mr. DiPiero was mentioning a moment ago, is to come back in and offer even some exhibits that were provided at the last meeting, so you can start to see with that site plan, building elevations, things of that nature, all those details that you may not have seen before. Yeah, like what, what originally was approved, and then why is it morphing, and then, you know, potentially, what do these tenants look like, and, you know, I, I guess I would want to see those types of details, right? Like, what was the original deal? And then in addition to that, after all the amendments are made to the redevelopment plan, there's an amended site plan that will come back.
We get multiple bites at this apple before we actually write anything down in Granite. So it, this is, they're asking us for something.
I get that, I absolutely understand that aspect.
Ed is going to write it up, and they're going to say, yes, that's what we're asking for.
I thought there was coffee and donuts tonight, that's all.
He's probably gonna, he's probably gonna ask Jennifer what she thinks of it.
I will be, I'll be discussing this with her.
All right.
Okay.
And will probably also ask Andrew to look at the parking requirements at that point. We didn't feel he needed to hear tonight for the parking requirements, but he will be later on to make sure that, that what we're doing is consistent with good engineering principles. So you get many bites at this apple.
Understood.
And I really am very appreciative of Mike for bringing up a better way of going about it.
He's my consigliere.
So, all right.
And the unique aspect to this project, I just wanted to mention, too, or this ordinance per se, is a redevelopment plan. And a redevelopment plan, for those that may not know, can be very specific in its criteria for a specific location. And that's a nuance in the new, in the state law that allows you to do that in order to encourage redevelopment of the project. I just wanted you to point, just wanted to point that out through your, your knowledge and background. And that's why they're here tonight to ask for that amendment.
I know, we need some clarification now. You've mentioned the term redevelopment plan.
Correct.
And we've been involved in redevelopment plan not too long ago regarding pilots, because one of the things you need to get a pilot is a redevelopment plan, okay? In this case, 1515 already has a pilot, so this redevelopment is not to promote a pilot, they already have one.
This amendment to it is not to ask for additional.
Right, okay.
Alex, can I bring up something? Is it allowed yet, or I can't do it yet?
Just for the Palatano.
Thank you. Okay, so I remember this plan, I think I was here for the second and third amendments to it. And I never liked the idea that you could drive on this woo nerf, and I believe there was parking on this, that central street also, and it was going both ways. It, it's gone both ways?
It's one, it's a one-way traffic.
Oh, I thought the renderings you had first have around were cars parked on each side and cars gone both ways.
There may have been, but currently and as it's approved, it's one-way traffic.
All right, so it's one-way traffic, and is there parking on this road?
Yes.
See, on this rendering that you have here, you don't have any cars parked on it or moving at all. I like this idea better. Why should there be any cars in there at all? I mean, I guess maybe Uber pickups and stuff, but you don't have a single car in here.
My memory was of the original application was, that was actually meant for more, more for deliveries and setups and things like that, but I don't know, you.
I'm pretty sure I remember someone bringing up, this might have been, we were still virtual, not mistaken, we had some concern about these string lights hanging and delivery trucks coming through. I know that was definitely something that's brought up, it might even have been me, no, I don't ask that question, it was somebody else. But, so, I guess what I'm looking at here on these renderings are these outdoor dinings you have now. What, what is that going to take away? Because I remember, like, I, I could have sworn I remember seeing things like little market spots and little pop-up tents and umbrellas and chairs, are all those going to be gone now? And then these are taking over for that, these outdoor structures?
We'll get to those details in the site plan. This does show the structures that were not previously approved as a difference. It does still show the structures, the large wooden fence, it does have areas for performances, things like that. You've got raised areas for seating for outdoor dining, you've got backless benches, you've got plenty of seating in those, in those areas as well.
Okay, and these, did the, oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
A majority of what is on that woo nerf area is staying. The, this, these were designed and intended to show that out, permanent outdoor space, so it was in a concept phase in order to present this idea of, you know, what does the board think about permanent outdoor dining? And then at the point, as Max said, when we would have to come back, because we would have to come back for amended site plan approval, is when we would show all of those details. So we would take the plans that are already approved and then superimpose these structures on them. So this was intentionally simplified in order to show that outdoor dining area.
Okay, so are these going to be closed in?
Uh, no, it's, it's open outdoor.
All right, so these are open, then it's all, I guess, three-season type rooms then? Unless, can you put heaters under there?
That would probably be an anticipation.
Is that legal to do? Would it roof that low? I don't know, I don't know that stuff, but okay. All right, so these are not going to be enclosed, I guess I was getting to. The road is one-way, and there is no parking.
There is.
There is parking.
Is parking as well?
Yes.
On both sides?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Thanks.
All right, Jennifer, you look like you have something you want to say.
I don't know if now, now is a good time, better later, I, I mean, I have comments on all of them. The, the hardest part for zoning is you have to remember that what we don't decide here, you're leaving me and me alone to decide. I like the idea of, of them approving the permanent outdoor dining, because during COVID, I had incredible responsibility of approving outdoor dining that was extremely unsafe and, but forced to do because it was the only way to keep the restaurants in business. I was extremely uncomfortable day after day approving those when I felt that cars were driving through them in other towns. I like the idea of the permanent outdoor dining. The way the outdoor dining is interpreted by the zoning department, and has been for 30 years, as Ed and I spoke about this today, it's a max of 12 seats. So if this doesn't get approved for outdoor dining and you come back to me a couple years from now, and I'm still here, or whoever replaces me, it's a max of 12 seats. Anything other than that is calculated in the parking. And if, if you become tight in the sense that you have just enough parking for all the tenants, you will not have enough parking for the outdoor dining. So it is important, I think, that the board address the permanent outdoor dining and figure out the best way that the board approves it, instead of leaving it up to me to, to calculate, because I don't have the luxury, as the board does, to say, well, some tenants, you know, are going to be open in the morning, and some are going to have in the evening. I'm looking at it as very black and white, very black and white square footage, it either works or it doesn't. So I, I'm, most of the time, have to send people to the, to the board, so then this can, these are all going to be board of adjustment applications, they will not be planning boards, so we won't have that discussion. So I think these are, these are important things that we sit down and discuss while we're here, so that we can work it out, because it is very difficult, as all of these be developed, that forces me to figure out, okay, what did the board exactly want, and did we think about all of these things? You know, the, the, you know, I'm, I'm a little nervous about the medical use, I'll be honest. The med spa is new, it's a brand-new concept, I've been hearing about it the last three years. I've had to deny every single one of them and send them to the board, even if I thought it was a good concept, and it would, it's just, it's not permitted. So it's, it's definitely something that this board should look at, not only here, but in the rest of the town, where we want to start putting this, you know, and Ed's the expert to tell me, like, where he thinks the best place to put those. But I think med spa is new, and I think it's definitely something we can work out. However, medical office scares me to death, because I issue all the tenant permits in precipitously right now, and all the new construction, and medical is the one use that hurts most property owners, because you put in a medical use and you, you filled your nice shopping center, and then all of a sudden, a couple tenants go out of business, and your medical use prevents you from putting in any other type of uses, because you've used up all your parking on medical. So I just want the board to be very careful with the typical medical office, because I have a couple businesses, particularly one in Lake Hiawatha on North Fabric, that he went to this board and got approved for a building for three tenants, and he can only fill his space with two tenants, because he chose a medical use, and he put a restaurant in. So the medical and restaurant wiped out all his parking, and he has a space that will be vacant forever until one of those uses leaves, and there's nothing I can do unless send them to the board. So I, I do think that those are things that we, we need to discuss and talk about, and, and Ed's the, you know, the best to help us guide, so that 10 years from now, when I'm trying to figure out the tenants, and some new business goes in, we don't want it to be vacant, we want to be able for them to fill it. So it's important that we work this out now, definitely.
Jennifer, I want to thank you for those comments. I think that's exactly what we and the applicants needed to hear.
Thank you.
So Ed?
So at this point, what I would offer is for the board to just really decide, I guess maybe as, depending upon what type of vote you want to take, with regard to whether or not you would authorize our office to prepare the recommendations for you from these requested amendments.
I'll make a motion.
Should we have any comments from the public before we do this, or is this?
Yes.
Are there any members in the public who wish to comment on this at this time? Now, all right, hearing and saying none, this closes the evidentiary portion of this hearing, and we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, and have our attorney just say, the motion is simply to.
Authorize our planner to prepare a formal report regarding the proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan for 1515.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Did each.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stanziel.
Yes.
Dingsmore.
Yes. So, there you go, we've got the ball rolling. I think it, I think the board really would love to have a fairly, I'll call it an executive summary of the previous application, that we'd like to have it so that everybody here who was not at the previous hearings can, can look and see what it is that we are trying to accomplish here, what the town is, is going to allow, and what you guys are trying to accomplish, so.
Sure, yes.
All right. Very good. Nora, do we have anything else to?
Absolutely nothing.
Absolutely nothing. All right, so do I have a, a motion to end tonight's, to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody who wants to stay overnight?
Mr. Chairman, you get votes. Sounds like you do.